No, the delay on the video.
Commodore sixty.
Your office, pretty, 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 on the video. Whoa, now we're seeing that. There we go. So, sounded different that time.
Testing, testing.
That's one, two.
Oh, there we go. No, that's, that's working. The audio's working here now. Testing one, two.
There's a delay.
Similar, similar.
There's a delay.
Just turn your stuff off.
Yep, yes.
Well, thank you.
Ready when you are.
He can't get it.
Well, he can't get it.
Now the computer's not working.
Yeah, I'm trying to get it to open and it's not cooperating.
Opening in another extended desktop possibly?
No, not seeing anything besides the mirror.
Nothing on the bottom.
Oh, there it is.
Control off the lead.
All I had to do was stand dust.
Mark, get up, Mark, get out, Mark, get up, Mark, get down.
Now you know my day.
Up, down, up, down, up, down.
We were kids with the antenna, the television.
That looks pretty good.
All right, you guys ready? I'm in business.
You can slide the microphone coast to your mouth, please.
Yeah, talk right into that mic.
Excellent, thank you very much.
All right, good evening, everybody. My name's Jeff Paffinger. I'm the project manager for the Project 131190, which is the Route 10, Route 322 intersection from the Department's Division of Highway Design, and I've also got Colin Bommer from our Division of Traffic Engineering here to hopefully answer any questions you guys may have about the traffic study that we provided you guys a couple of weeks back. I'm going to do a very brief project overview this evening, just to get everybody refamiliarized with the project, and then sort of go through the results of the traffic study that was recently completed, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys have at the conclusion of that. Project overview, the purpose and need of this project is, you know, generally to address the condition of Bridge 00518, which is the Route 10 over, Route 10 over Route 322 bridge. Secondary purpose is to address the condition of 5753, the bridge that carries Route 322 over the 10-mile river. We're also replacing Bridge 00646 under this project and eliminating the sort of de facto off-ramp from Route 10, which is the Norton Street extension right here. Bridge 518, like I said, carries Route 10 over Route 322, and is proposed to be replaced under, removed underneath the project. In order to accomplish that, we'll be lowering Route 10 down to the Route 322 elevation, providing a single, signal-controlled intersection, and providing pedestrian accommodations and sidewalks all around the intersection. We're also proposing to replace Bridge 5753. This is another conditions-based replacement, though there are some other benefits to being able to provide a wider structure, which will improve the pedestrian and bicycle access over, over the bridge down Route 322. We're also proposing to replace Bridge 646, which carries Route 10 over the 10-mile river. This is an 85-year-old arch culvert that is actually in relatively good condition. However, it is hydraulically inadequate. Essentially what that means is during heavy storm events, the opening isn't big enough to allow the storm flows to pass through, which creates a backup on the upstream side of the river. And again, you know, with the replacement, we are going to be able to provide some additional improvements on Route 10, including adding sidewalks for pedestrians move through there, and wider shoulders for bikes and other users. Also is improvements to the intersection of Route 322 and Old Turnpike Road. The traffic signal here is also getting replaced, pedestrian accommodations. The only real improvement we're doing, the turn lanes and lane arrangements at the intersection are going to be the same in the final condition as they are existing, but we are improving the turning radii at three of the corners to allow larger vehicles to make the corner without encroaching into incoming traffic. And then the Route 10 at Old Turnpike Road intersection is also being improved. Today, this is a straight shot coming up Route 10 onto Old Turnpike Road. We are going to be teeing up that intersection, which will make traffic slow down when it comes up this residential roadway, and also make Route 10 look more like the through movement that it's supposed to be today. Traffic's getting replaced. You can see the sidewalks running down here as well, and pedestrian amenities at the intersection to allow crossings. Apologize. My apologies, I swear I went through this right before I got here, too. Okay, so now, for the reason that we are here today, to discuss the traffic study that the department recently completed, sort of focusing on the intersection of Route 10 and Route 322. We undertook this due to some concerns regarding the operation of the proposed intersection with the bridge being removed. Originally, there was a traffic study done back in 2004 that determined that an accurate intersection would effectively accommodate the traffic without the bridge being there. There was an additional analysis completed in 2017 to validate these previous findings, and after we did our public involvement meeting last spring, it was requested that we confirm the previous findings to make sure that any proposed developments in the area wouldn't negatively impact the, the findings of the 2017 study. So, in August 29th, 2022, the department went out and recounted all the intersections in the project area. I do understand that there was some concerns about this being done when school was not in session, but, you know, when the department does take the raw data, it is adjusted for average daily traffic counts that we collect on a regular cycle. So, if traffic counts are taken during a low-traffic period, they are adjusted upwards so that they match with the average daily traffic data that we have on file, and vice versa. You know, if the counts are unreasonably high, for what would you expect to see, they would get adjusted downwards. Those raw counts are then projected forward into what we call the build year, which for this project is 2024, and the design year, which is typically 20 years out from that build year. A half a percent escalation factor is applied to develop the future projected volumes, and those projections are also adjusted to account for any known developments in the area. In this case, the Stone Bridge Crossing development just across the line into Cheshire was added to the volumes that we use to perform this analysis. This is the Stone Bridge Crossing development. The department did give approval for the site plan back in April of 2022. You know, quite a large development with, you know, everything on this side essentially needing to utilize Route 10 for its ingress and egress. Like I said, this did receive approval from the Office of the State Traffic Administration, or OSTA, in April of 2022. OSTA replaces, places requirements on developments to ensure the safety of the traveling public, and to make sure that they mitigate any traffic that is generated by the development. In this case, OSTA did put several conditions on the development due to the traffic that was being generated. They're going to need to widen Route 10 in the vicinity of their driveways in order to provide turn lanes. They are required to install or revise the traffic signals at the two-site driveways on Route 10. One of them is going to be a new signal. The other one is opposite the westbound 691 off-ramp. They're going to be required to widen the 691 off-ramps, repave Route 10 anywhere where they're making pavement marking revisions, and, you know, it is a requirement that all these conditions are met prior to the developing, opening, development, opening for business. So, the traffic analysis itself was performed using Synchro Professional Software version 11. Synchro is sort of the gold standard for doing traffic analyses, widely-used program. The peak hour traffic volumes were analyzed, which are typically commuter hours. There are some places down near the shore where we may do beach traffic, you know, summer, weekend analysis, but, you know, typically it is just the commuter hours that we analyze, the AM and PM peak. Synchro measures average vehicle delay and assigns a level of service grade essentially from A to F. Anything better than a C is, or a C or better is considered to be good for the letter of service grade. D is still considered acceptable, and then E and F is where you start to experience severe congestion or total breakdown of the system. So, we sort of did two different analyses. One, the first one was looking at the intersections overall, and analyzing them for that, that letter grade. The analyses indicate that all intersections have sufficient capacity to handle the future projected traffic volumes. As you can see in the below chart, the AM peak hour is showing a level of service B. So, B or better for all three of the intersections that were analyzed in both the design year and future build year scenarios. The PM peak hour is showing a level of service C or better in both the design year and build year for all the intersections, with, you know, a couple of them coming in better at certain times.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, sure. Is, can you please reference that data? Is that, can you please go back one? Is that current today as we stand, or is that after the, the update?
It's after the update. This is the, the new.
And what's the control? What was it before? So, you show your 2022, 24, you show 2024 and 2044 as built, the, the new upgrade, but what is it today as a level of service prior to the upgrade?
So, essentially, the Old Turnpike Road and Route 10 intersection, and the Old Turnpike Road and Route 322 intersections are not changing. There's not any significant geometric changes that are happening. There's not additional lanes going in. It is essentially the same condition that we're putting back, just with a new signal, which, you know, we'll have the timings optimized, but, you know, we could have done that with the old one, too. So, you know, I think it's safe to assume that there's just essentially no change at those two intersections. The intersection that would be changing would be the Route 10 over Route 320, or, yeah, Route 10 over Route 322 intersection. That is currently an overpass, as you know, with that one sort of de facto off-ramp coming down. The overpass, there's really no grade that we can give that because there's no intersection there today, so it's, it's just free flow over it. But that de facto off-ramp currently operates at a level of service F during the peak hours. So, that is the, you know, the failure, the, you know, significant congestion that I sort of mentioned when I was going through the letter grades, so.
So, do I understand Route 10 at, Route 10 at Old Turnpike is the most southern area closest to 691, correct?
Correct.
So, that would be the only signalization that we would have as a reference for Route 10, because, because there's no other signalizations today?
Correct.
So, at, so Route 10 at Old Turnpike is still going to be an A? Or, I'm assuming, we don't know what it is today, but it's going to be an A tomorrow when it's done? And then you're also saying further north, 322 at Route 10 is going to be a C?
C in the PM peak, could be in the AM peak.
Gotcha. And then all the others are going to stay the same level of service? So, traffic flowing at 322 is going to stay the same at all the other intersections?
Yeah, like I said, you know, the, the 322 Old Turnpike intersection, we're really not making any significant changes there, so for all intents and purposes, it's going to be the same as what is being experienced out there today, which we have measured at a level of service B in both the AM and PM peak hours.
And just for reference, when you mention the road first, so when you say 322 at Route 10, that means the east-west direction service level? And when you say Route 10 at 322, you mean the north-south?
So, I'm not, I'm not differentiating between them on this slide. This is the intersection as a whole, so all the movements at that intersection combined into one.
Okay.
Yeah. I am going to get into the individual movements. I believe it's on the next slide, actually. But, you know, overall, it gets averaged out to a level of service B here for the entire intersection.
Okay, so it's, okay, it's not directional, it's the entire section?
Correct.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. Paul, you make a great point, and that's what I was making notes on. So, just to clarify, the Route 322 and Route 10, that currently is an overpass, so there's no light there?
Correct.
So, that's free-flowing, and we could assume that's an A quality since we're not stopping?
Well, it's not completely free-flowing because there is still that Norton Street connection that comes down, and like I said, that is currently a level of service F. So, that would be eliminated and combined into the intersection, you know, the traffic that needs to come from Route 10 southbound on Route 322, or from 322 up onto 10 northbound.
But you, you don't have any data for that because that's being eliminated?
Correct.
So, just for clarification, Route 322 and Route 10 is going to have a light? And then that's going to go from, I would assume, an A to a B during the AM peak, to a C during the PM peak?
That's what the intersections are going to be, yes, a B in the AM peak, and a C in the PM peak, but, you know, I don't think that that Norton Street intersection that's currently an F can be discounted from that because it is part of that intersection.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the fact of adding a light, and, again, that was always one of my concerns, is having multiple lights, you know, what the traffic flow will do from there. So, again, I, I have some of the same concerns that Councilman Klinsky has about, again, some of the grading, and that there's not a control of where we're at today and where we're going tomorrow. That's all.
Can you, can you just update this before you distribute it and include the Norton Street level of service as a reference, because I think it's important to have that in here?
Yeah, absolutely.
You're eliminating an F, right? And I, and I know it doesn't carry across everything, but I think it's important to at least have transparency to the entire situation.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, so the next slide shows the individual movement level of services. I did just put up the, the new intersection where the bridge is being removed, and I realize that this is hard to read, so I will just point out sort of the highlights once I, once I get down there. But, you know, this was done to measure the average vehicle delay for each individual movement instead of the intersection as a whole. You know, the analyses indicate an acceptable level of service for all the movements at this intersection and at the other ones as well. The other intersections, all the individual movements were a level of C or better, which, as I described earlier, is considered to be good under this scoring system. This one, primarily the, well, not primarily, I do have three of them highlighted here, which are level of service D, which, again, is still acceptable. This is the Route 10 southbound. This is the 2024 build year. This is the 2044 design year. So, the Route 10 southbound does pop up as a level of service D on both of these analyses, but it is just the through movement. The left turn is still a B over here, and a B here, and the overall level of service for the intersection, again, is still a C in both scenarios. You know, that Route 10 southbound does partially include that traffic that would be utilizing the Norton Street extension today. And, again, you know, this is all essentially considered acceptable based on the analyses and the scoring system. So, you know, quick conclusion of our traffic study, you know, the analyses, again, indicated that there is sufficient capacity to accommodate the future projected volumes at all the intersections that were studied. Level of service B or better for all intersections was realized in the AM peak hours, and a level of service C or better in the PM peak hours, and these were similar results to the previous studies that were done in 2004 and 2017, you know, essentially validating the findings and showing that the additional volumes from the development in Cheshire didn't negatively impact the results of the previous studies. And, you know, we'd be happy to answer any additional questions that you guys have about presentation or the study in general.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, please.
Thanks, Jeff. I have a question about going eastbound on 322, left-turning into Old Turnpike Road. Will there be a left-turning signalization there?
Yes.
Anybody else? Yes, go ahead.
I have a quick one. There was a reference to the sidewalks that, that will be added, and then after you mentioned the sidewalk piece, you did bring up the, the new development in Cheshire. How far will that sidewalk go? I know there's some, there's a couple of houses there, and like, will that be able to be all the way through to the new development, or is that outside, outside the scope of, you know, the DOT?
I think a conversation needs to be had, again, with both our management and with the Town of Cheshire. The Town of Cheshire had previously been adamantly against adding any sidewalks within their town, so we are stopping the sidewalks short of the town line on the east side of the Route 10, and running it all the way down to the town line on the west side. The development is adding sidewalks. It seems like a logical connection that that were there, but, you know, given the Town of Cheshire's previous position, I think that we need to continue that conversation with them.
Right, okay, thank you.
Other questions? Yes, go ahead, Jeff.
Madam Chair, thank you. So, between 2004 and 2022, was it a half a percent increase on average? Because that's a formula that you used till 2044.
Yes.
Okay.
So, were you asking if that's what we realized, or?
Yeah, is that what we realized, or is that? Yeah, is that what we realized? Is that average?
It's been relatively flat for pretty much as far back as we can go. The half a percent inflation is something standard that we use in urban areas, um, which this is considered urban. We don't differentiate between urban and suburban. But, um, you know, going back in the last 10 years, we have not realized a half a percent increase. It's been closer to flat than really anything else.
And then one last question. So you use a, a software that, I guess, is done and used in the industry, um, but you guys in-house did the, the anal, analyzing the data, correct? You guys didn't use an independent company?
No, Colin, um, Colin's staff.
Okay.
That's the one that did the, the study.
That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
One quick question, Madam Chair.
So I am curious why, uh, overall, I know you're, you're, you're calling a level of C uh, for the whole Route 10, 322 intersection, but you, you showed us that there's a level of D at the, uh, Route 10, 322 through and right lane heading southbound into Cheshire. In the 2024, but also in the 2044, both the, the through, both through rights. What would make it, how could you improve that? Is there anything you could do in the, it's, I mean, you're talking about the, you're talking about going, uh, straight or taking a right. What's driving the level of service so low as a D? And is there anything you could do, design-wise, to improve that?
I'm gonna let Colin take this one.
Yeah, oh, good evening, Colin Bommer.
All right.
Uh, thank you all for having us tonight. Um, so when, when we lay out the, the three signals from the traffic engineer's perspective, the biggest concern I had was the two signals on 322, which is the short space between them. So when we do the timing plans, we kind of, we favor that a little bit to make sure they're running together nicely. You're not allowing a queue of cars to form in between those two intersections and really start mucking up, um, operations. So that's why the, the one southbound on Route 10 movement is the worst individual movement for that overall intersection. It just is, it, it works in favor of the, the intersection as a whole. Is just, you know, kind of, I don't want to say sacrificing, but that just had to be the, the one that gets a little bit less green time. And so to answer your question, the, the way to improve that would be, you know, further widening and adding a second lane. And I guess the point I do want to make across is, so what we're looking at is the, um, like the PM peak hour, so it's the worst hour of the day. And as Jeff was saying, the, what our planning department does is when we collect the counts, they then, you know, take those counts we collected August, but they'll, they'll make sure they match, you know, the worst, you know, 10% of the year in volumes. And then we inflate those numbers to the 2024, so just, they, they end up being fairly conservative, so. I, I know it looks bad as a D, but it's, it's something that, you know, the reality is, you know, most of the time is going to work pretty well. And, um, and occasionally you'll have to, you know, sit, sit a little longer than you'd like through the red light. But, uh, that's, um, that, that's what it works out to at the end of the day, if that helps answer the question.
Is there an option to widen those? I mean, you mentioned that you could add a second lane to widen it and improve the level of service. Is that an option here? Or what would keep that from happening? Let me ask that.
The, I, I'm assuming there'd be rights-of-way implications and the, the cost-benefit for the widening. I don't think we realize that based off the, um, you know, the amount of benefit you're gaining, because, um, the, you, just, the amount of delays. I, I don't want to marginalize it, but it's, it's not, um, and I, I use, I realize I'm using the term acceptable, but I'm not the one driving through and getting stuck at the red light, right? And that's kind of, I don't want to, um, make light of it, but it's something that, you know, in our, in, in our industry standard, it's kind of, uh, we, we view it as, you know, that's generally tolerable for that one or two hours, you know, during a, a peak rush hour period to, um, you know, you'd occasionally wait, wait through a, a cycle length to hit the red light, so. Um, so I, I'm not, I can't speak to the, you know, any possible, you know, infeasibility with the right-of-way, but just looking at it, I don't think the cost would be, would add up to, to realize the benefits of the widening is what I'd say.
That kind of gave me pause also, Paul. A D level. I don't know much about road construction for sure, but, um, it does seem subpar, so.
I just, the question, Madam Chair, is, is there any, is there any possible next steps that can you look into for us? Whether there's potential for expansion, what the access, what the rights are on either side of that? I, I don't know who owns what.
I mean, I think the issue would be on the north side of the intersection because there is, um, the business on the, on the west side. Um, once we get south, we are into the river, which could be some environmental impacts there. Um, but again, you know, the level of service D probably wouldn't justify the cost of widening, the cost of the property, um, the cost of the additional structure that we need to build, um, for the bridge over the river there.
How often do you, how often do you design new bridges and new roadways to a level of D service? Is that a common thing? I mean, I would think that if you're, if you're building a new bridge or designing a new road, that you're designing it to a higher level of service than a D. Is that common for the DOT to design D-level services?
I mean, the department doesn't really make a whole lot of new roads. We are doing improvements to existing infrastructure, um, and that is what this is as well. Um, you know, we sort of weigh the benefits versus the costs, um, you know, try to come up with the best product at the end of the day. Um, but, you know, a level of service D, especially just for a movement or two at an intersection, isn't all that uncommon at all?
Just, yeah, just to add to that too, um, one of our benchmarks is the entire intersection. If it's a level of service D or better, we're, we're specifically happy with that. If it's worse and we can't find a way to improve the overall intersection's level of service, then we have to go through some additional steps with our environmental reviews because of, um, the, uh, air quality regulations with, um, having a, a level of service E or F on the intersection as a whole. So the overall intersection being a level of service C and that individual movement level of service D is, uh, like Jeff said, it is actually fairly common for us to have, have those kind of results for a project.
For a new project? And just, just for clarification, have you studied the cost-benefit of widening and improving the level D for this intersection at that specific spot, or have you not?
No, we have not.
Thanks.
And it is a level of service C at that intersection.
C as a whole, gotcha. Yep, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Jeff.
I have one more question. So one of the presentations that you guys did at some point in time, if I recall correctly, you guys mentioned that you guys have been working on this for some time, and you guys designed it, and then you figured out the cost, and you redesigned it. So if I, my memory serves me correctly, you guys originally designed it with keeping the bridge. Is that correct?
Uh, no, there was never any design that was done with keeping the bridge. That first study that was done in 2004, recommended removing the bridge, and that was before design of the project started. That was still the study phase. And ever since that 2004 study came out, we have been designing it, um, with the bridge removal.
Do you know what the cost savings is to the state by removing that bridge?
Uh, I mean, a
Preliminary?
Few million dollars maybe, nothing significant, or at least as far as our transportation projects go.
Yeah, my, my only concern is, again, you guys mentioned benefits to cost, and this being in our community, you know, traffic is something that, you know, when I grew up in town, I remember seeing cows, a ton of cows. Um, and now there's traffic everywhere, there's lights everywhere in our town. So I just, again, I'm just concerned about the truck stop being down the road as well. And I know some of the trucks currently don't go that way because they can't make that right-hand turn from Route 322 to Route, um, I guess 10, um, or even left. So now you're going to have some of the truck traffic from the truck stop that now they know they can go that way. And having, you know, the heavier equipment or trucks coming through the community rather than getting back on 84 right there is obviously a concern as well. So again, I don't know if you guys factored any heavy equipment, heavy trucks going down that way as well, or increasing because of the truck stop. Because right now, you can't make that right-hand turn safely. So improving the turns, I think, is important, but you guys got to keep in mind that you will get some tractor trailers now coming that way. Because you can't get to 691 from 84. So if you stop at the truck stop, you need to grab 691.
You can't turn from Norton Street.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so it, once in a while, you, you catch it. Um, but again, I have my Class A license, and I've never taken one of my trucks that way, even if I have to go to 691. Um, I just think that we may see some increased traffic there. That's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Jeff.
Sorry, I'll make my comment quick, um, and thank you again for the presentation. But I think anyone from the public who watches this, their head is going to be spinning. They're going to say, what just happened? This is unlike any other vote that we as a council take. Normally, what, what comes to us is, uh, town manager and, and Annette will say, there's a bridge in town, it's failing, and here's why we need to fix it, and here's how we will proceed, and here's the rationale. The document we have in front of us, the first sentence says, "This project involves the removal of Bridge Number 00518, which carries Route 10 over Route 32, and the construction of a new at-grade intersection between those two roadways." Now, somebody reading that is just, is going to say, okay, well, why? Now we're hearing it's a cost savings for the state, and as Mr. Perry said, you know, this might create traffic issues where the residents might come back to us. So we need to make it very clear that this information here this evening is, is informational, and this council is not voting yes or no on this project. This is simply the state DOT, uh, which a decision has already been made, with, and there was no input required or necessary from the town council. So I think we need to get that on the record to the residents. Um, and I really think that there should be a one paragraph memo in the, in the memo that is submitted into the record that says, here's the project and here's why it's happening. Because I can tell you right now, I don't know one person in town who's going to watch this presentation and say, oh, okay, yeah, that makes sense. So I, I think we, you know, and, and I understand, it makes perfect sense to you guys, and I appreciate that. But, uh, part of our job is to simplify things for the residents. So that, that would be my, my, uh, final comments on the matter.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair, I
Yes, go ahead.
I, I don't want to rehash the whole project, but again, I, I have a similar concern. Um, well, this, this is a major project for the area. And I don't understand why it wouldn't be just as feasible to make a bigger, larger bridge to allow clearances on, on 322, sorry, and not put a pinch point on 10. In other words, keep, keep an elevated bridge, buil, build a bigger, better bridge with better clearances underneath. And then I, I think that eliminates the potential altogether for two lights that are literally side by side. And I think from a design standpoint, that would be better. Is it that much more money to do that? Is that why you guys chose to eliminate the bridge and go down to, to the ground level? Is it a financial decision?
No, yeah, I mean, I don't think it has anything to do with the money. I mean, obviously, our maintenance responsibilities are going to be relieved once we, or if we, um, do eliminate this bridge. But, you know, if this were a brand-new intersection today and we were looking at it, um, this wouldn't be an overpass. You know, it's sort of an antiquated design that you don't see surface streets going over or under other surface streets really all that often. Um, you know, this is something that originated before the interstate highway system was even a dream in somebody's eye.
But again, Route 10 is a pretty major thoroughfare, so it's not interstate, but it's a highly traveled route, north to south, for sure. And now we have a good development going in on the south side of Cheshire. To, it, it just seems to me that it's, it's going to add difficulty to the people. And if there's no other way to do it, or the cost was astronomical to put a bridge there, then I would say, okay. But I, I, I'd like to know the differential between making a bigger, better bridge with clearances versus, you're already going to do two bridges over the river, right? So again, it's, I think it comes down to dollars and cents for the project, partially. No? So I guess my question is, the decision was made because it's the most, it's the most logical way to design a roadway today, to not have an overpass? It wasn't financial, the decision to, to do this like this?
I don't think that it was the construction financial part of it. You know, I'm sure the maintenance of the structure was part of the decision. Um, but the fact that we were able to show an acceptable level of service at the intersection, um, you know, without the bridge there, I think is a bigger justification for us not putting in than any sort of cost savings that the department would realize.
Okay.
I'll just, um, just add in too, I, I can't speak to the, um, the dollars and behind the project, but just from, uh, the complete street's perspective, I think, you know, removing that overpass, to me, makes a, a better, you know, pedestrian, bike-friendly intersection and location. I think, I think there's a lot of value in that, and in addition to, uh, Jeff mentioned earlier, the, the Norton Street, it's a tough, it's tough to
There's no way around that, I agree.
Move out of that.
That's a tough problem.
So there, yeah, so there'll be some movements that are certainly, you know,
When I first heard about this project,
Some that are helped, yeah.
I liked the fact that we were going to eliminate that narrow bridge there, which is very dangerous. But the more that I think about it, I, I'd like to see a bigger, better cement structure that allows travel in both directions unimpeded. Why have a light there? I mean, unless it's, I, I think it's based on cost, no?
Like I said, I think that that is a consideration, but it wasn't all that, you know, it isn't all about cost.
Thank you. Uh, Chris?
We're obviously hearing a lot of concern from the members of the council, so if you're not the appropriate source to direct this to, who should we direct an appeal to? I, I mean, it sounds like that the majority of the council, if not the entire council, has concerns about this project, and we're not really getting a lot of those answers. And maybe it's, it's not your authority, you don't have the authority, you don't, you don't have the decision-making power to, to tell us what we need to tell, what we need to know. So who is, if, if not you? Because, because again, I'm hearing concern, and we need to know what, what our next steps are as a town.
Or is there an appeal process?
Correct.
That we can initiate?
No, I mean, it's, we definitely take the towns, um, you know, whether they're for or against the project, into account on whether or not we're going to move forward with it. This project's been around for a long time. And, you know, previously, we hadn't heard any opposition to what our plan was.
Well, and I want to clarify, no one's opposed to the project, which is the improvement in the area. We're opposed to the revised plan that's being proposed, you know? So there's a difference between not wanting the project, period, which I don't think anyone's saying, versus not agreeing with the redesign for the project. So, so again, if, if not you, then who do we direct an appeal to, um, if the town objects to these plans?
So I mean, I'm going to be taking this information back to the department and meeting with, you know, the people who do make those decisions. Um, I'll be reaching out to, you know, I'm not sure if it's Annette or the town manager at this point, sort of discuss, you know, what the next steps would be if, um, the town wants to voice their formal opposition to the project.
Great, so who are those people that are making the decision? Because I, I'm, I'm still not hearing who the people are ultimately that are making the decision.
Um, I'm not sure if it would be my division chief, or it would go up higher into the chief engineer's office.
Okay.
But it would be at, you know, a very high management level.
Okay.
I would just, I, I would just, uh, like to, to just ask the council. Are we, is there a consensus here? We're not going to take a vote, of course, on this, but, but I think I'm hearing the consensus from every councilperson.
Troubling.
Is that okay? Everybody's okay with that? So yeah, I think you hear a consensus from this council that, uh, we would like to make sure we have the right person, the right group of people, uh, to voice our concerns. And, uh, certainly you can work through, uh, uh, Annette or, or Mark, of course, or a town attorney. But, but, uh, we would like to be able to speak further on this, I believe.
Madam Chair, if we could just add one thing to that. Um, obviously, improvements are needed. Everybody's said that, but I think it's also a timeline. Um, and I think our town should stand, you know, behind our, our town officials in keeping the conversations going and speed, speeding this up as fast as possible. If this project's been talked about since 2004, there's no reason this isn't done yet. So I just don't want us kind of giving resistance and then you guys blaming the town that we didn't make the areas more safe by, by obviously giving opposition. So I think, you know, with that being said, Madam Chair, I think we all want to see this happen, and also a timeline that's reasonable. The last time you guys came in front of us, there was a delay in time, and it's been almost a year now. Um, we're in March, so I, I think that we just want to see this moving quickly as well, and again, in, in, in a forward motion, and not put on the back burner since like 2004.
Thank you for coming, however, and we appreciate the work they have done. And, uh, but it's important for us to be able to speak too. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you, town council people. Thank you. Are we all, we're all set?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Like I said, as, as
Like I said, as usual, filter things through Annette or my office, like you've been doing. So, when you talk to your superiors about the questions the council has, send it to both of us, be great.
Terrific. Thank you.
Yes, we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Let's move on to councilperson's communication. I'd like to open up the floor. Anyone have anything?
Madam Chair.
Yes, mine.
On the 18th of February, I had the pleasure to attend the Police Ball at the Aquaturf. It was wonderful to celebrate our men and women in blue. It was a very nice event. Mr. Town Manager was there. We had a great time. They haven't had it for a few years because of whatever it is, or COVID, or whatever. So, it's back, and it was a really, really fun time. So, I wanted to just mention that I was there and had a really great time. Thank you.
Excellent. I remember as a kid, Mom and Dad getting ready to go, and they were very dressed to be very, it was a great night. So, anybody else?
I look good, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I dressed up.
You did? I wish I'd seen that.
My Sunday best.
Chris.
And a Saturday.
First, someone else is going to talk about a couple Y events. I'm going to talk about the dry event, not the wet event. I'll leave that to Mr. Lombardi. I had the pleasure of attending with many members of the council, actually, the YMCA annual event, annual meeting. And just want to thank them for putting on a great event.
Oh, yeah.
Thank them for their contributions in the community, and thank them for honoring some notable members of our community as well, especially our Person of the Year, our Deputy Police Chief, who, hearing the accolades about him, and actually seeing the support from his department that night was very touching, and well-deserved. So, just want to shout out to all the people honored that night.
Before we go into anything else, and before Mrs. Turnquist leaves, I just want to just get an update on our roads tonight. Are we out plowing, not plowing, but treating the roads and everything?
We will be. We pre-treated earlier today. We were fortunate, because originally, it was supposed to start as rain, but they changed that, because if it rained, we wouldn't have been able to do that. So, that was good. The crew's coming in at 10:00, and we'll go from there.
Ready to go.
Supposed to slow down tomorrow morning.
Please extend our, thank you to your team. You worked all through the night, and it's, the whole town appreciates the great job that you do.
Thank you. I'll let them know.
Get your two hours of rest.
Yeah. Take a break.
Am I allowed to leave yet?
No. After the manager's report, you can go.
Hour and a half of rest.
Great. Thank you so much. Let's keep going. Any other council matters, communications? Yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And as Councilman Palmer, I alluded to, Saturday, February, this past Saturday, February 25th, was the sloper plunge, a greatly successful day for the YMCA. We raised over $100,000, over $100,000. And I was extremely proud of our team politician group. It was the biggest group that we've had since I started the group years and years ago. So, we had town council members, Paul Chaplinsky, Bill Dietzick, myself, Jim Morelli from Planning and Zoning. We had Caleb Coles, Zoning Board of Appeals. We had Alicia Novi in Parks Board, Katie Wade. And we had the former Commission for Persons with Disabilities, Candace Mazzarella join us. And our team did fantastic, considering we only had seven people. We raised over $5,400.
Wow, that's a lot.
So, thank you to all the participants, and thank you to the YMCA for putting on a great community event, even for those who don't join, don't jump. They, it's a great social event. So, thank you again. And then, one last thing as well. I believe we had a wrestling state champion that won the state Double L championship. So, maybe we can get a proclamation for him in a future meeting. I don't have the details, but we can get it, I'm sure. Thank you.
Very good. Congratulations, everybody who jumped in. I did make a donation. I'm glad they were very successful. Anybody else? Anything else? Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on. Report of Special Committee. We have the Self-Insurance Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Self-Insurance Committee met on February 22nd last week. Myself, Councilman Perry, and Councilman Chaplinsky were in attendance. We reviewed the current-year '22-'23 budget status, and we had information through January. So, that's through seven months. The month of January by itself was over budget by approximately $183,000. On the year, it's under budget, $771,000, which is a number that we don't want to look too closely yet, because there's still five months to go in the year. After that discussion, we moved on to looking at updates in the projected dollar amounts for '23 and '24. They slightly decreased, which is a favorable situation, but the committee did not take action to change any of the budgets for this fiscal year, for this upcoming fiscal year. We do have a meeting planned for February, which will occur before the Board of Finance meeting for the budget vote. So, there will be one more analysis done by the Self-Insurance Committee for an updated final actuarial review of the projection. And
In March.
In March. I'm sorry, did I say February? I'm sorry. In March. March is in two days from now. So, our March meeting will have another chance to review the numbers. Councilman Perry or Chaplinsky, I know there was a lot of discussion at the end, because there was a 6:30 Board of Finance meeting, I believe. So, that, the end got somewhat rushed. So, if there's anything else that you wanted to add?
Anybody?
No?
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Just Madam Chair, there was one announcement that I had forgot, if it's okay.
Oh, yeah.
Just wanted to congratulate and announce the gymnastics team, Suddington High School. We received word today that the gymnastics team won the Class L state title, the championship, which was really great. And with that championship, a number of athletes qualified for the state open. So, wanted to extend a congratulations from the council to Olivia Adams, Riley Core, Tori Harrington, Izzy Way, and Taylor Cooley. All those girls will be going on to the state championship. So, best of luck to all of them.
Great. Okay, we're going to move on to the town managers. Before you get into it, Mark, I would just like to say something to everyone. It has to do with, we're in the very middle of going through the budgets and going through different processes, the Board of Ed budget, the town budget, the different departments within the town budget. And we did, and it's a very difficult thing. Things are coming in much more expensive than we anticipated. And one of those things that we just got notice about was our retirement fund with MERS. And we got notice of that. The town manager got our notice on that on Thursday, last Thursday. We had an emergency meeting on Friday, and the numbers came in quite high. But I do, I'm going to let the town manager just address it for one second, but I want to address it here on the council floor, because as we go through this process, this entire council is a very conservative council, and we are going to be able to, we're going to look for every place we can to help in this budget. We understand that any increase is difficult. We've managed not to increase the budget by any degree over the last years. And this year may be a little bit different, but we are still looking very much, no matter what side we're on, we're going to be examining the budget and looking for every dollar we can to be very conscious of any increase in our budget this year. But our town manager, I'd like just to, Mark, if you would just mention this whole thing with MERS, explain MERS.
Let me explain what MERS is. MERS stands for the Municipal Employee Retirement System. All town employees are in the MERS system, and approximately a third or less of BOE employees. Most of the BOE employees are in a separate system, which is the Teachers' Retirement System, which is funded by the State of Connecticut. MERS is not funded by the State of Connecticut. It's funded by two sources, and two sources only. The employee, which gives a relatively small percentage, a little less than 3% for the most part, and the government. We're, every March, we're given a number from the state retirement board on what exactly the town is responsible for. Normally, it's a relatively small, well, it's always, it's always an increase, but it's a relatively small increase. Just to give you a heads-up on it, we pay approximately, for a police officer, we pay approximately $25 for every hundred dollars they earn. For a firefighter, we pay approximately $23. And for a rank-and-file employee, we pay $17.50. The $17.55 is what the BOE pays, because BOE obviously doesn't have any police or firemen. We budget for a, well, the budget director, along with the Board of Ed budget director, talk about where we should budget for any particular year. They get input from MERS. They use letters that they receive from MERS from the prior year, and they budgeted a certain amount. Last Thursday, I received a call from the budget director over at the BOE. Immediately, I put my budget director on to do some research on it, and the numbers that we anticipate, we didn't get the numbers yet, but we anticipate the numbers from MERS to be pretty astronomical increase. We're hearing numbers that for police officers, it's going to be almost $30 instead of 25 and change. For firefighters, it's going from 23 to 25 and change. And for the rank-and-file, it's going from 17.55 to 19.55. Those are large numbers that we do not normally get. So, how does that affect the taxpayer? Well, from a town standpoint, since all of our, all of our employees are in the MERS system, that's going to affect the town's budget by an increase of $605,000. The Board of Education budget's approximately $235,000. So, we've asked for and received permission from the Chair of the Board of Finance to have a public hearing next Thursday, to request at the public hearing for the Board of Finance to modify the town budget and the Board of Education budget respectfully with those numbers. That'll take place publicly. It'll take place in the council chambers next Thursday, and it's at 6:30. So, that's exactly where we are, Madam Chair. MERS is a state statute. The town does not have discretion. It's given a number. It's not something where the town can say, okay, we're just leaving MERS. It doesn't work that way. You have to have all your employees in MERS, or none of your employees in MERS. And I can honestly say that to ask the unions and the collective bargaining to leave MERS, that would be a monumental, if not, and why would we do that at this point? So, in this particular case, because it talks, the funding aspect to do our own at this point is very, very high. I think in this particular case, we have to anticipate that this is not going to be a one-year situation. It could be more. So, we have to look at it very closely, Board of Ed and the town's directors of finance are going to look at this very closely. We will get the letters, hopefully, this week with the exact numbers. But I don't anticipate they're going to be, they're going to be lower than what I just gave you. So, it is a major effect on our budget.
Make sure we got that out there, Mark, and let the folks know that we are in the process of going through all of our budgets and trying to find every penny. So, please go.
With all that, with all that good news.
And Chris was also
Yeah, just on this topic, before we move on, obviously, we don't have a choice at this point, because the budget is short. Again, $605,000 on the town side, plus the additional amount on the Board of Ed side. Obviously, we need to move forward, and I appreciate the manner in which everything was shared and communicated, and even tonight, just Mark sharing that, you know, openly. I'm just curious, though, if we could get a little bit of history, because even doing a simple search back before even the pandemic, back in 2019, there's articles entitled, municipalities say pension costs could skyrocket. You know, again, this is from like three, four years ago. So, how is it, I'm not looking to point fingers, but I do need to understand a little bit more how this, we didn't plan for this a little bit more. Again, this goes back three, four years even, you know? So, how is it that we're left in this situation right now? And you don't need to answer right now, but I'd like to know a little bit more about how that happened.
Yeah, we have to, we're preparing that for the public hearing, because obviously, we're given the numbers, and the numbers are anticipated from the state each year. And they actually say in their letter of the previous year what to anticipate the following year. Then they give you a history of it, where you've been over that time period. So, both Jennifer from the BOE and Jim from the town side, will be giving a presentation to the Board of Finance at that public hearing, which explains a lot of that. Did anyone anticipate it going up? Sure, we budgeted to go up a little bit, but no one anticipated that. And I can tell you, the 130-odd municipal-type agencies are all in the same situation. They're all asking the same question right now. But that doesn't mean they're not going to lower it. They're not going to lower it, from what I can see. We're going to get those numbers very similar to what I just gave you. So, I hope to, I know that I've received several phone calls from three members on this board, asking me to do a little research on that. So, I gave the assignment to Jim this morning, and he's already been in touch with Jennifer.
Okay, and you'll share that with us even before?
As soon as I get it, I'll share it with you. But obviously, it's only shared with the Board of Finance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
One question, Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Mark, did you say that the state, each year, when they ask us to, when they give us the number for MERS, do they anticipate the next, what the next year is going to be?
There's, in the letter itself, it says in there that they anticipate what the next couple of years are going to be. I won't get into what the number was, but it's substantially lower than what
So, that's my question. So, the letter that we got last year, that said, hey, here's what, how things look for the next couple of years, it didn't give any indication that it was going to go up to this?
No, the only time it gave an indication was several years ago. Some of you have been on the board at the time. How it works is, you have, it's a regular pension fund, just like, which is like a private pension fund, but it's managed by, you know, managed through the state. And what they do is, when you look at the anticipated rate, some, most of the pension funds in the old days used to say, oh, we're going to, we guarantee an 8% return rate. That never worked out. So, about four years ago, some of you might remember, they went from 8% down to 7%, which of course causes the, causes the contributions to go up. So, that was anticipated. They told us they were doing that. So, we had budgeted for that, if you recall. So, we went up a little bit more that year. I think it was three, maybe three or four years ago, they did that. And they also bumped up the employee share. So, it kind of leveled it off a little bit. But this is, this is one I could tell you that from, certainly from Jim and Jennifer, who called me on Thursday, this was, this was a stunner for them. And of course, the headache was transferred to me and Steve. So, and of course, I thank the proverbial gang of six for getting it, for immediately dropping everything to discuss this with me and superintendent. And I agree with Chris, it worked out very well. Everybody got all the information at the same time on all the three major boards. So.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have one quick question. So, Mark, when you mentioned state, is, can you kind of explain, you know, I think the residents are, you know, going to be watching this. It's an independent board. It's not like the state itself, right?
No, no, it's the State Retirement Board.
Yeah, so, but what's that board made up of?
Appointed officials, which include actuaries and things like that. This report comes from an independent actuary that gives it to the State Retirement Board, and the State Retirement Board then votes on it.
Okay.
Then we get the letter from the, from the actuary themselves.
Okay, so, the board is a diverse group of individuals, correct?
Oh, yeah. It's not, it's not a political board in the least. It's very diverse. It's an offshoot of the Controller's Office.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's guided by legislation, I believe, correct?
Oh, the legislation is very specific. And we've been, we've been in MERS since the 50s.
Right.
So, we've been, you know, we're, it tells us exactly what happened, what has to happen. And one of it is the fact that the Retirement Board dictates what the town pays.
Right.
And the legislators dictate what the employees pay. So, hence the reason why you're up here for the municipality, you're down here for the employees. Now, I'm saying that, I'm one of the employees. But the fact of the matter is, it's very, very difficult. If the legislature is asking for municipal union employees to give more money, it's very difficult for that to happen, where it's very easy for the, for the actuaries to say, okay, here it is, this is what the towns pay. So, that's how it's been working.
But, I mean, essentially, the Connecticut State Legislature and the Controlling Office all control this entire process with the laws that are enacted and the people that are appointed from our controlled state legislature from the top down.
There's also a positive note to this, is that unlike, sorry, Chris, unlike the teachers' retirement and the state employees' retirement, where the state funds it, those both retirement funds are in dire straits. This fund is very strong, and it's very simple, because the actuary looks at it and says, okay, this is what we need to go in there, and they send the bill out. So, it's paid all the time.
The biggest, the biggest thing that gets me, Madam Chair, is that we have a governor who comes out, and we have in all of the newspapers, we have a budget surplus of billions and billions of dollars. Billions. It's in every newspaper right now. Our state legislature and our, and our, right to the top of the, at the State of Connecticut, are boasting about how much money they have in the coffers, which I'm sure everybody understands comes from us, the taxpayers, and the small businesses, and the businesses in Connecticut. And while we have a surplus on that end, all the municipalities are being, are being punished and penalized with this unprecedented increase that was not anticipated. They didn't tell us for the last couple of years, and we just find out two days ago, which many municipalities have already passed budgets like we did. So, this is a really, this is a really difficult situation for municipalities, and it's, it starts from the top at the State of Connecticut level.
It does end up the same, though. In Suddington, it ends up the same, because we have, the Board of Finance allows this to happen. So, if I put it, and Steve put it in his budget weeks ago, the number would still be in that budget.
Of course. But we don't have a choice on the number.
Yeah, the number, the number.
The number's the number.
What I'm saying is that, is that what I'd like to have happened is if they tell us, tell us in January when I could put it in my budget.
But that wouldn't make a difference to the taxpayers. The taxpayers are still But that wouldn't make a difference to the taxpayers, the taxpayers are still feeling the pain of, of what's happening at the top of the state level.
I don't disagree.
Madam Chair, thank you, yes, and, you know, I deal with labor unions in my private job as well, and this is a, this is what we're seeing across the board. These pension funds are in critical status all, all across the country. So, the question, again, to Paul's point, is that this, all right, we're, we are where we are right now, and we as a town, okay, we have to come up with the, with the money to fund this, but what are we doing as a town to lower our future contributions to pension? And I'll say that, even if we come up with a, with a strategy to reduce the pension cost of our own employees, that's only going to make a small, small dent in the overall status of the pension fund. So, this needs to be an initiative at the state that says, "Okay, all municipalities, what are you all doing to reduce your municipal pension liabilities?" Because the way that it's been operated in the past cannot continue. And, and, you know, we see it all the time in the newspaper, though, "Oh, the state pension plan is underfunded," but nobody talks about the MERS pension plan. So, now here we are talking about it, and I, I hope that there's some leadership at the state level to get all 169 municipalities striving to lower the pension costs one way or, or the other. And, you know, I'm sure there's plenty of blame to go around over the last however many decades it's been going on, but we have to look forward here, so.
Thank you, Tom. Mr. Tom, oh, go ahead.
Just one other point, so Tom, you know, I agree with a lot of what you said, but to, to, I started by asking for some other information so we could make an intelligent decision, because again, some of this originated three, four years ago plus. But that statement that you made, to put the blame on the state legislature, we don't know for a fact whether that's the case. That's why I said, this was predicted years ago, let's get information before we start making accusations.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilman Palmer, I'm not blaming the state legislators for this, because this, this is municipal employees' pensions that caused this issue. I'm, I'm suggesting that because it's a state-run pension program, a solution hopefully can be found at the state level to say, "Okay, let's take an example, let's say Mr. Shoda in this council," or whatever leadership in this town says, "Okay, here's five different things that we are going to do to reduce our pension for our employees." And then maybe the state comes in and says, "Hey, look at Southington's model, this helped Southington," and come up with some kind of a streamline, because right now, there's 169 municipalities that are impacting the MERS pension plan all over the place. So, no matter how good or bad Southington does, it's not going to move the needle much. So, I'm just saying that there should be a strategy to, to avoid this situation in the future.
No, and I agree, and that's why I'm saying, so if we, maybe you build up a little bit each year over the previous four years, I don't know, but that, that's why I'd like to see that information. Before making any decisions, I'd like to see all the facts leading up to this, because it, it kind of came, came at as quick as we all agreed to, and, and we don't have a lot of facts. And Mark, you already said that multiple people have asked you for this, so I think before we continue with any dialogue, let's get the facts.
I, I agree, and, and I think we also need to understand how the pensions are being calculated, okay? Are we getting, are we getting pension calculated on 40 hours a week? Are we getting pensions calculated on the overtime hours? How, where are these numbers deriving from?
That's a statute, specifically in a statute.
There's no choice.
There's no choice.
Well, well, there is a choice, because those are voted on, right?
Not at the municipal level.
You're talking about the MERS program, it's statutory, so therefore, anybody, anybody who works in the town of Southington, if they're a police officer, it's for their straight salary, plus their overtime, plus their special duty. For a fireman, it's their time plus their overtime, for work, for, so it's the time and the overtime. The only, the only, the only ones who don't get the overtime are the regular, in my case, are, but, which you're saying is, I think what you're saying also is, it's based upon what they make per hour.
Well, listen, if there's never going to be a change, then we're just going to keep footing the bill. The taxpayers are going to keep footing the bill, and until there's a hard conversation that's had at some point, whether it's here on the council dais, or at the state level, or the federal level, if we just continue to operate this way, guess what we're going to do? We're going to have these emergency meetings every couple of years and say, "Oh, look, we're, we're in the hole again." So, you know, this, this is a much larger conversation, and Councilman Palmeri, I'm sorry if I came across as blaming anyone, because that's not my intent, I'm just saying that there, and this is going out at the federal level, too. Let's not, let's not pretend that it's not. There's a major problem with governments, and the taxpayers are always the ones that pay the bills.
But there is, there is talk about a tiered system, just like the African pay level, and that's something that certainly CCM, which I belong to, would support. What a tiered system is, is that someone, someone who is employed by a municipality after a certain date, whatever date you want to use, July 1st, 2025, whatever it is, that person's MERS would be based on what their salary is, not their overtime, not their special duty. But that's a tiered system, so that means everybody who's hired prior to that gets phased off, just like the state system does. So, the new, so there's talk about that, but of course, that has to be done through the state statutes, not through the local.
Right, right, and, yeah, things, things aren't going to change.
But Mark, just to be clear, I mean, you know, the Councilman Palmeri, you had said, you know, this happened three or four years ago, or you thought maybe it could have happened three or four years ago, and maybe we could have budgeted it.
It was predicted.
We can't budget, we can't budget. It could be predicted by some, some person who writes an opinion letter in the newspaper, but that's not what was predicted by the state board that issues the municipalities this data year after year. We heard the town manager say earlier that we had the prediction the last few years, nothing that we received from those boards, from the decision-makers, actually said that we could anticipate this happening, and we cannot. I'm just going to repeat for the, just to be clear to, to the, to the people who might be watching, we cannot anticipate future expenses that we don't know about, and tax the residents, and say, "We're going to increase our budgets because we think there may be an increase in costs in the future," when we don't know. We can't do that. It would be irresponsible for us to build a bridge for something that we don't know. So, it was not given to us, it, it wasn't given to us four years ago, three years, five years, or it wasn't given to us last year. So, we can, we might be able to pontificate at what, what drives it, but what we can't do is say that we should have known this, and we certainly can't say that the information was given to us in the last four years, as was mentioned, and we certainly could not have overtaxed the residents, as was implied, so that we could start the process of building our budget for this in the future, because number one, that's irresponsible, and number two, we did not know about it. And we, and that is 100% the fact as we know it today.
So, just in response, I began by saying, I am not, I thought I was very clear, Paul, what you just said is exactly contradictory to what I said. I said, "I do not know," which is why all I was simply asking for is information so that we can make an intelligent decision. Rather than making statements like you just made, I'm trying to get information so we can make it based on facts.
You inferred that we could have started to build the process, you said, "We could have known this four years ago," so I wanted to make sure it was clear for the people who are watching.
I read a headline from four years ago.
Yeah.
That was a fact, I read that from four years.
An opinion letter from, where?
Okay, let's move on.
Further details to come.
Yes.
Yes, and I would, I would suggest, we'll get, we'll get it out to you, this is, it's not a simple thing for Jennifer and Jim to do, especially since we're trying to finish our audit by tomorrow. That being said, Jim and Jennifer will get it to as soon as possible. We've also been asked to put out a press release, which the two of them are working on also. That being said, they're going to be very busy, as soon as I get it, you will get it.
And that's one of the reasons why I wanted to make sure I brought it up, is because we make, we need to be transparent in what's happening day by day here at the town level, especially right now, because we are facing challenges going forward with our budgets, and I know we're all looking at ways to get the most bang for our buck, and making our budgets as tight as possible, so more will come. Mr. Town Manager, I'm sorry I took up too much, so much of your time, but.
That's okay.
Thank you for the update, and could we get on to item A, please?
I will go as fast as I can, I'm sure, because I did, I want you guys out before it starts snowing, and that has to go to work.
Seven minutes.
All right, so, that being said, Board of Finance minutes, as was just mentioned, we threw the Self-Insurance Committee out so we can have our meeting. That being said, please reference page two. As some good news, our revenues are above budget, approximately a million dollars, which is good, but of course, we're not quite through the whole fiscal year yet, so at this point, we're looking good on our revenue side. We are, we are very good on our contingency, we've used very little of our contingency. Most of the money, most of the, the actual time was taken up with several Board of Education items, which are all very important. The first is they presented their budget, obviously, to the Board of Finance per the charter. If you look on the bottom of page two, they've asked that their non-lapsing, which is the carryover funds for fiscal year 20 and 21, be allocated. The Board of Finance agreed to allocate it toward the various projects that they had, and also toward Title I offsets, those were approved. The one that was tabled was another request by the Board of Education to use $760,000 in carryover funds from '21, '22 to the '23, '24 budget. You could read the minutes, obviously, but the, the gist of it was several members of the Board of Finance felt that it was premature to act on that. What they wanted to do was go through the budget process, see where we are when we get into March, and when the Board of Finance has to act on the, the last Wednesday in March, and they'll take it up at that point, but they felt it was premature to act on it, so that was tabled. So, that was the major items for the Board of Finance minutes, answer any questions that you may have.
I just have, I just, I'm sorry, I just have a comment about, about this. The, the non-lapsing account specifically for the operational budget, I, I know I said this three years ago, it's documented in the minutes, I, I just continue to be concerned about using funds to supplement an operational budget. It is creating a fiscal cliff, because there is no source of those funds for year after year. Mark, I remember three years ago, having this exact conversation with you, and it was at least three years ago. So, I share the concerns raised at this meeting about using any type of non-lapsing funds to offset expenses in the operational budget, because again, it's kicking the can down the road, if you will, because there, that, there's, you're going to have to start with $720,000 less next year, just to break even to this year's budget. So, again, I just want to point out the concerns with using the non-lapsing account for that, and I understand that's why they tabled it at the meeting.
Correct, and that was, it was a Board of Education request, but they didn't say no to it, but they said it's premature to act on.
Can I ask a question, Madam Chair?
Sure.
Mark, just for clarification, the use of non-lapsing funds, have we used such things on the town side? Because I know we're talking strictly, Chris, you were talking about the Board of Ed's use of non-lapsing accounts on, on reoccurring costs, not just one-time capital costs, for example. Have we done that, Mark, on the, on the town side? We haven't, right? I'm, I'm asking, but I know the answer.
No, we don't.
Thank you.
They have to be, well, in our, in my, in my world, my world's a little different than the Board of Education's world, but in my world, we couldn't possibly, we'd, we'd have to use it for one-time capital expenses, and that's the only thing I can use it for.
Just another example, Paul, to that point, so with the COVID relief funds for the town, we were, were very deliberate in how that money was used for one-time, non-recurring expenses. And again, thinking back, I, I think it was two years ago, could have been three years ago, to use some of those funds to supplement the Board of Education budget is the same concern, because there isn't a recurring source for that income. So, so again, to the points being made here, with our COVID funds, they were used so that it wasn't creating this fiscal cliff, because there weren't, there aren't going to be holes in, in future years, because the budget was using funds from federal relief to do that.
Well, that was, that was why, on both sides of the aisle, whether it's Board of Ed or town, that we were very, very, made sure that Department Heads were very cautious and cognizant of the fact that we should not be doing that. Making regular employees with COVID money was improper to do, because we were worried about the cliffs.
Right.
And I, you know, that's one of the things we're going to be looking, having to look at this year very, very closely, about employees that were not supposed to be made, they were contractual employees made with, with federal money, and to make sure that they are, have not been guaranteed a job, because that money is no longer here. So, anyway, so that's just a, an editorial kind of thing, I just wanted to.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, it is a good conversation that we're having here. My first comment is to Councilman Palmeri's point here on the appropriations that he's referencing on, on the bottom of page two and the top of page three, right? I think that, like, we read that, and we don't really know what it is, there's, there's no, no description there, it just says, "Board of Ed non-lapsing account, various projects listed." I think we should have at least something there for us to reference, because I, I don't know what they were.
I attended the meetings, so.
Yeah.
If you attended the meetings.
Secondly, I do want to give credit to the Board of Ed for the fact that we are actually talking about the non-lapsing account, which means that they had excess in the, the year that's referenced, as opposed to them saying, "You know what, we're going to, we need to spend all of our budget money," which is not good practice. So, that's a positive. And the other point to, to counter Councilman Palmeri's comment, which is, which is a valid one, that there's a cliff there if, if we utilize this method, is that the taxpayers paid during those fiscal years for Board of Ed operational money, and then the Board of Ed said, "Hey, we didn't need this Board of Ed operating money, so we want to use it again for operating money." So, there's, there's an argument to be made there as well, and if they wanted capital items to be done, that would come as a separate request. So, I don't want to, certainly don't want to penalize the Board of Ed for having an operational surplus and saying to them, "Because you had an operational surplus, now you need to go invest in capital," right? So, we're kind of, we're, it, it is a complicated situation, but at the end of the day, I think it's a good conversation that we're having, and that there were operational surpluses to begin with.
And I, and I agree with you, because in the minutes, it, it isn't clear. It does, so, so for people that aren't clear, the non-lapsing account is funds that were rolled over from previous fiscal years that potentially could be used. So, for example, on the town side, we harvest, we use a different term, we harvest those funds.
Budget reallocation.
We budget reallocate funds, but again, they're, they're used mostly for one-time capital projects, for, for non-recurring expenses.
Yeah, they have to be put in the capital budget, the capital budget has to go through the Board of Finance and this board and vote it.
Yeah. The other, the other thing that's important to know is there are, again, I can speak professionally, because I live it every day, but for example, special education, there are, there are so many costs associated with services needed for special education, that maybe you don't end up needing, maybe the, the number of replacements aren't as much as predicted, maybe there's more retirements than predicted, so there, there could very well be a surplus at the end of, of a budget year. Not intentional, but just because there are factors that live out throughout, throughout the duration of that fiscal year.
Right. And before I move on, that's the only, I want to say that the system works.
Right.
The carryover system works. We started it four years ago under Superintendent Cannellin, it works. So, I would hate to think that because of whatever happens this year, we scrap it, it doesn't, it works.
No, it's checks and balances, it's good.
Because it does benefit both the BOE, and I got to be honest, it benefits my budget, because if they use it for small capital or whatever, that's less capital that we have to worry about. So, it, it's a good system, it works, and during bad years like this, we debate it, like what's happening right now.
Okay.
Thank you. The next item I have, speaking of budget reallocation money, this is the, was in last year's capital budget, we're finishing up phase two of the boiler room at the Municipal Center, as you all are aware, we removed the boilers, we moved the, the asbestos, this is for the actual improvement of the, of the room. We're going to use it for swing space first, and then it's going to be, eventually be the file room for the entire, for the entire building. The recommendation from our Public Works Director is that it go to Millennium Builders under the EZIQC system for the sum of $46,315, which includes a 10% contingency. And that's here, if you have any questions for her? If not, I'll move on to the next one. This is for the, the Fire Department. As you know, you have funded for me for many years now, the townwide roof program. We, we need a roof on Company Five, which you know is on Dunham Street. This is, comes from that, that, once again, is through the EZIQC, EZIQC system, and with a 10% contingency is 177, 177. Also, on our volunteer company two, they've asked for, the chief approved, and now, of course, asking for you to approve renovations to Fire Company Two. That sum is $46,004.15. And then renovations to Station Three. That number with contingency is $43,388, and they're all through the millennial builders out of the EZIQC system. Ask any questions that you have. Once again, and that's here, if you have any questions for her. The last one, some of you are going to remember, the former Smith Medical. Smith Medical, several, several years ago, working with DEEP, was required to put the wastewater into the town's system. It's, most of it is, is not human waste, it's, it's mostly drainage waste. Therefore, the town agreed to do it, and they charged them double the amount, which is $3.30 per cubic feet. That being said, it runs out, actually, it has run out. They've asked for a two-year extension to February 20th, 2025, and that coincides with their permit from DEEP. I know that Bill and Val, who were going to talk about this or not here, but the Sewer Committee voted unanimously to recommend this to you. Any questions on that? The last three items, I have Mr. Perillo here. I know that he, he met with, I believe this was the SEED Committee, not to be confused with the Strike Committee. So these are, these are three recommendations. And Mr. Perillo, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Lou Perillo, Sullington's Economic Development Director. Good evening. I'm very pleased to present three tax abatement requests that were recommended by the SEED Committee for approval by this body. The first one will be Anthony Properties. They're proposing to build 244 units of housing. 10% of them will be affordable, and the remaining will be market rate. It's on 43 acres of land. We feel it's the highest and best use for this property. The property has a few issues concerning with it, topography, transmission line easement, water line easement, and some wetlands, substantial wetlands. The project was approved by the IW Inland Wetland Commission. It's before the Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing next Tuesday. The project should have, in addition to the residential units, approximately 17,000 square feet of commercial space. And that is before you this evening. What you should know is this is a seven-year tax abatement. It's a commercial tax abatement that the, through the state. It is borne by the town. This, we've been working with Anthony Properties for approximately, April will be three years. Considerable investment. When we started, it was about a $50 or $60 million project. Now the apartments alone are over $75 million. The commercial is expected to be $16 million. At today's mill rate, that's expected to be $1.8 million annually to the budget after the abatements are through. This is a declining tax abatement, 100% for the first two years, then 50, 40, 30, 20, and 10. And the reason that that's important is this is applicable to real property improvements only. Our tax assessor and her department has done a tremendous job in speaking with Mr. Shu, the site locator for this project, and they have discussed what the town feels is personal property. You'll also have the occupants' vehicles as tax that you will get immediately. So you're looking at least a quarter of a million dollars, if not substantially greater, initial impact, let alone the multiplier effect of everything that's going on with that. In addition to that, but wait, there's more. There's also sewer enhancements that'll be borne by the developer, and there's going to be infrastructure work on Curtis and West Street, subject to approval by the DOT. The town, the Planning and Zoning Commission, through their deliberations when, for the mixed-use transitional, did a terrific job. They lowered the amount of commercial, just to be, so they, they recognize commercial is a big traffic draw. The other aspect of it is you're going to see improvements with dedicated turning lanes on West and Curtis. So you'll see directional right-turning lane and left-turning lane when you're proceeding south on West Street. That should help facilitate and alleviate some of the traffic concerns. That, too, is borne by the developer. Why tax abatements are needed, from our experience, if you recall, we had two industrial parks proposed. The cost of the road from when the inception of the project about three years ago to when they did not get built was because the infrastructure cost literally doubled. It was approximately $600 for lineal foot for road, and that cost exceeded about $1,200. So this abatement will go towards hopefully getting this project through Planning and Zoning, through the Department of Transportation, and eventually constructed, and we can enjoy some taxes, substantial taxes. So it's almost about a half a mil.
Lou, could I ask a question, please?
Certainly.
My first question is on this, the Anthony property. You mentioned substantial wetlands. And can you tell me, what is substantial?
Well, the property is 43 acres, and there's about 50% wetland constraint, and it passed inland wetlands, so they've been avoiding, they're constructing eight buildings, and to do a, a project of this size and to avoid that much wetlands, that's why we think it's the highest and best use. To get $91 million of investment on the remaining land that is constrained by two water lines going through the property, dissecting it from under West Street through the property itself, the transmission lines to the north of the property, and the wetlands that border the east of the property, but actually a significant factor that I think is more than the wetlands, because everyone knows you're not going to touch the wetlands. You know, there's a disturbance, but it was approved by the Inland Wetland Commission. The topography is the main thing because if it were industrial, the work that it would take to make that site feasible for industrial would be difficult. And to get $91 million of investment on the remaining land of 43 acres, that's a real tough thing to pass up.
And I appreciate that, Lou, but I do want to ask you a couple of other questions.
Certainly.
The other question I have concerning the wetlands, was there a study done about animal life and endangered species on that property?
I don't know, but it did pass the Inland Wetlands Commission. I'm here for the tax abatement.
Would it be normal for them to do a study on that?
It would normally, I think they would go through a species review, habitat review, any wetland impact, anything for Xiro Zero increased runoff, that effects that it would have in the area. And again, they went through that whole thing, and our inland wetland specialist, Dave LaValle, does a very good job protecting our sources. So.
And the other question I had, and then I'll open it up, everybody. Thank you for being tolerant with me. So the, I, I sat in a couple of discussions on this, and I'm, and I just have a question. So as far as the egress to the property and the entrance to the property, we're talking about Curtis Street, use of Curtis Street, will West Street have an entrance or an egress?
No, there will be no egress on West Street. And as a matter of fact, where it's going to get corrected, or improved, I should say, is on the Centennial Plaza entrance on Curtis Street that's currently there. The entrance for the property will be opposite that. So what's happening currently is there is at least two, maybe three curb cuts on the former Toll's building itself where the Doggy Daycare was. If you're proceeding southbound on West Street and you try to take a left-hand turn onto Curtis.
Right.
If you break to take a left-hand turn into the former Doggy Daycare, you're leaving the person behind you in the middle of West Street for the northbound traffic. By elongating that access point further down, more traffic can flow through. I would imagine some of the safety improvements that the DOT would approve would be a left-hand dedicated turn lane, offset signalization, and again, that could easily be over a million dollars of improvement borne by the developer.
So they will not be coming out onto West Street directly?
Not from, the, the existing curb cut that's there from the Toll's property will not be utilized.
No.
There's topography concerns. We've tried, we tried to negotiate a realignment of Churchill Street with the developer paying the bill. From an engineering standpoint, you do not want to be on the approach of a downhill incline to a signalization. You're better off when it's already at the bottom of the hill.
Thank you so much.
So we, we did try to do a few things, and it wasn't in the best interest of safety.
Thank you for being patient with me.
No.
Any other questions? Joe, come on.
Just a question, Lou. Will these, will these apartments have garages, any of them?
There'll be some garages, some that are built on the strong topography will have garages underneath. There'll be a few detached garages as well. There's going to be, I believe, a community room, an athletic room.
Set a pool.
Yeah, several other amenities.
Okay. Do you have any idea about how many will have garages?
I don't.
Just, okay.
Off the top of my head, sorry.
Anyone else have any questions? Yes, go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Perillo. This is obviously a project that comes with many opinions for or against, and I don't think that's this board's job. So we put these tax abatements in place. Now, we don't have to approve the tax abatement, but at the same time, we put these tax abatements out in front of the, the business community and said, here's an incentive to come to town. This project will go forward with or without the tax abatement? Is that, that's my assumption, is that, can you confirm that, or?
I will not confirm that.
That's up to the developer.
I think the road you're traveling down is extremely dangerous. All right? This is a state enterprise zone from distressed properties, started from Pratt &amp; Whitney. The reason why, say, I don't know if it'll go to litigation, if it didn't, or if they just walk away, but where it gets very dangerous is, this is about credibility, and it's a tool. How would you like it if you were going to buy a piece of property?
Well, excuse me.
Uh huh.
I, I understand that it's, it's our decision to make yes or no, and we, we understand. And that, that was kind of the point of my question, is that, you know, if we deny it, what are the implications of that? Do we have the authority to just say yes or no because we don't like a project? Or do we, or can we say, look, this project was already approved by Planning and Zoning, it's already getting the reviews by the boards that you just mentioned, and our approval of the tax abatement is pending approval from every other approval that goes along with the project? Because I don't want, I don't want the residents to look at this tax abatement and say, oh, the town council approved the tax abatement, therefore they are 100% in favor of the project. So, and you're saying it's dangerous if we vote no on it.
Well, I would defer to the town attorney. I don't think they would engage in illegal, they would probably just walk away. But where it gets dangerous is this is a tool, and it's credibility.
Right.
So, but like I said, in the past, one of the reasons we set up the Fast Track system is if you're going to deny somebody, developers want a quick denial. They go by demographics, and demographics are basically measurements. So to them, like when we were doing Panera, I spoke with the site locator, and there were some changes that were desired, and he said, look, I got to open up 100 of these. Doesn't matter if it's Sullington, Wallingford, or whatever demographic that hits 30,000 cars a day, they'll lose more in their stock than what the development costs if they don't hit their targets. Now, this is a whole, this is a private development company, well, national company. It's for their own portfolio. Some of my contacts were told me how fortunate we are in Connecticut, that we have a Dallas company looking to do our tax abate, I mean, a, a development of this size. I don't even think the tax abatement was an issue three years ago. With inflation, there are so many things that have been jeopardizing it. And like I said, where, where I get concerned is, and it's not this council, but in the past, there was discussions from previous council members where we would come before the project was approved, and they're working on their CO, and they're like, well, it's already built, why should we give it to them? That's a very dangerous proposition because it involves risk, and this is a way of factoring risk. And if you increase their risk, some people can walk. And that's why I'm somewhat sensitive to what the comments are, and I get it, some people might not like the project. Everyone's used to seeing trees, and they want to protect the wetlands. No one wants more traffic, but the property owners have a right to develop as they see fit. This developer is not a fly-by-night, it's for their own portfolio. And I honestly believe it's in the highest and best use for the property itself and for the town. I don't know where, I mean, our town assessor came before you trying to equalize and generate revenue by hiring an outside auditor. I don't recall what the revenue was going to be, but we have someone who has the ability to generate over $2 million for the town in a tax abatement because of the state identified it. So what I'd rather do, if you don't want to do tax abatements, let's go back to the legislature and remove them from certain areas that you deem that you don't want to do it, and to try to decide who gets it and who doesn't.
Understood.
Thank you.
Sorry. Paul, you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the, the purpose, if I'm not mistaken, Lou, that the town council has a bite at the apple is because we have an opportunity to see the type of development and, you know, give our opinion as to whether we think that that's the best use, whether it's appropriate use of the funds. I'm assuming that, you know, that's the reason why the council has the, you know, one say in, in, in all of this, right? There's a, the inland wetlands, there's a planning and zoning, the states involved. I don't believe that it's a slippery slope for the town council before a project starts like this, before they're spending significant money, to decide whether this is the type of project we want. I think that the reason we have this in front of us is because some projects may be attractive from our perspective, and some projects may not be attractive from our perspective. So for us to just rubber stamp everything that comes through just because there is an opportunity for a tax abatement, I think is irresponsible for this board. My personal opinion is, for this specific initiative, when I look at this, this was industrial land before it was rezoned to a mixed-use zone. I know that, you know, this was, when I was on Planning and Zoning, it was a mixed-use zone with much less residential component to it. It was one of the reasons that we, when we rezoned it at the time, that we agreed to some residential, to make it, you know, somewhat manageable, although we didn't like having significant residential because it was industrial. My perspective is, this was not just taking the existing zone and asking for an abatement. We changed the zone to suit the use, and now we're asking for an abatement. So I see it a little bit differently. And I, you know, we're talking about 200 or 300 additional residential condos in an area where that was not previously zoned, and I do believe that this council has a voice as to whether we think that that's appropriate or not. I personally don't think it's, it's a good use of, of the, of the tax abatement. I would like to see the tax abatement enterprise zone for much larger commercial, industrial use. You know, Greenway Commons, you know, when we talk about, you know, cleaning up brownfields where there's significant hardship there to develop a piece of property because of contamination, where, you know, somebody's not going to come in there. In this case, what we're talking about is a, is a development that didn't meet the regulations. We changed the regulations, and now we want to give a tax abatement. To me, it's not that exciting. That's, that's all, you know, and, and I hear time after time from the residents in our community that residential development and increasing residential density is, is something that they don't want, and that's who we have to represent. So that's, you know, from my perspective, the concern that I have on this.
Thank you, Paul. Mike, you had your hand up.
Madam, thank you, Madam Chair. Lou, do we have any other $91 million projects in the hopper?
I have one coming that exceeds that on a different parcel, potentially, that's in an enterprise zone. And if this board decides that they're not going to adhere to it, I would be bringing that one company in prior to further advancement. I can tell you, for this tax abatement, significant funds have been spent by the developer. Three years of time, civil engineering, wetland engineering, designs, and I respect Councilman Chaplinski's, where he's coming from. I feel bad in the sense that if the MUT was changed that much, we should have went and eliminated that property from the state's enterprise zone. We have done that in the past. We did it with Target and Lowe's to ensure that we were getting the tax revenue from the project at that time. And that wasn't something that we really wanted. We didn't really want commercial. We were saving that property for industrial, and we were trying to get ESPN, quite frankly, to expand there with the ESPN zone in a campus style. We knew the Hartford Insurance Buildings were coming up because their leases was expiring, and they had the Allianz takeover and whatnot. But the buildings weren't new enough, quite frankly, for ESPN. By the time they get them built, they, they need to build them differently. But again, this is this abatement. We do have another project coming. That's where I say it gets dangerous.
Credibility.
It's a state program, it's credibility, it's a tool. If you're going to take away the tool, I'd like to know in advance.
Yeah. We spent a large part of tonight's meeting talking about some things coming down the road that are going to damage the taxpayers' wallets. But when I hear of a project that could potentially bring in $2 million a year, it may not happen the first couple of years. But we got to start looking ahead for projects that are sustainable. Retail has gone bye-bye. We see many restaurants in town that are closing their doors. I think we've got to strike while the iron's hot. We got a project like this in front of us, and I agree with Lou all heartily, credibility, and I'm not telling anyone how to vote, I'm going to be supporting this tax abatement because I don't want to see future projects walk away thinking, hey, listen, there was already a big project before, and it wasn't attractive enough for the town council to offer the abatement, so we're going to walk away. That's my concern. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Lou.
Madam Chair?
Yes. So I guess I have a couple of questions. So this property is in the enterprise zone. And I guess that, you know, the, the usage of the property has changed. But, you know, it was always my understanding that the town made an agreement with the state, like Mr. Perillo stating, that, you know, we would create enterprise zones to increase tax revenues. And I, I would agree that at a certain point, we should have changed this then and not made this property part of that then. Because this developer, you know, looked at Soullington, spent, you know, probably hundreds of thousands already in designing and in the process. And, you know, it's, it just, it's also the property owner. The property owner owns a piece of property that was changed in hopes that this project's going to happen. So what does that do to the property owner's value that they currently know they're in the enterprise zone? And when you go to try to, you know, rezone or change it to what you're trying to use it for, you're also affecting the valuation that, again, it's worth X amount because it's in the enterprise zone. And these were areas in town, and I, it's way before my time getting involved and attending meetings and whatnot. But I don't know, did the state give the town any financial benefits by creating enterprise zones in our town? Does, does anybody know that? Or was it just an agreement that we made with the state? Why did we make enterprise zones in the town of Soullington?
The benefit to the town was, at the time, there's certain industrial codes where they, they would come in and we'd give them a tax abatement, get a tax abatement. But the tax abatement was, we refunded the money. The town of Soullington received the money from the state. So the, the person who built, the person who operated, they got a tax abatement, but we got a refund on it. So that's only, that's only in certain categories. When it comes to, in this particular case, residential or commercial, it's going to be on our, our nickel.
So when we created this enterprise zone, what was the benefit?
If I may, state statute created it, along with various other towns. And how it started was, I believe, when we lost Pratt &amp; Whitney, we lost 3,000 jobs and over 10% of our tax base directly. And I think the estimates were over almost 20% from the multiplier effect. The town was devastated. So East Hartford has one, I think there's 17 or 19. And there's various other names for other zones throughout the state. They are enticements. So if someone gets the industrial tax abatement, it's a five-year tax abatement for 80% of real and personal, the state would reimburse the town half of that. So for the commercial, it's borne on the town, but it's an incentive, it's a tool to attract folks to your community for developing. So when people look at, for example, the 91 million that comes in, you also have to look at the jobs to build this and the multiplier effect associated with it.
Yeah, yeah. So, so again, I guess I'm just trying to, you know, figure out how these zones were created. And I guess, you know, you answered it, that the state realized that there's hardships in certain parts of the state by certain industries or businesses closing. And they realized that, you know, there needed to be job stimulation creation there on tax revenues. Now, the enterprise zones, over the course of the year the town has, what has been our rough dollar amount as far as increased tax revenues because of us using this tool?
I'd have to check with the assessor, but I can tell you, I haven't broken it out by enterprise zone. I have done it through the industrial parks, the majority of which are in the enterprise zone that we created. And we've created at least $4 million annually through our activities, probably even more. It's almost $1 billion of development. And we have at least a quarter of a billion coming down the pike.
Hey, Jack, can I clarify on that? On the, on the history with that? A lot of the times with the enterprise zones, it's a state, it's a state, it's a state overlay. When the state overlaid, for example, this parcel, it was purely industrial, right? And, and when it was rezoned to an MUT zone, it was kept a significant portion industrial with a minor residential component. The enterprise zone, you know, in my mind, really is to promote more industrial use. And so we, you know, the MUT was kept mostly industrial with a small residential component. The difference that happened here is that the zone, unlike the next two applications, which to me are logical, this zone was changed just recently, in like the last handful of months, to fit this project. And then they're asking for a tax enterprise zone. So for me, the change in the zone was changed to increase the residential density significantly over the enterprise zone original content. So that's the reason for me why I'm...
Yeah, I guess then my question is, then, at that point in time, what was changed? I, I feel that that should have been the time that we should have done something. It's kind of a little too late.
It just happened.
Yeah, again, but it, it shouldn't have happened, kind of like, you know, the statement you made at that point of me giving recommendations on, on the trash in the town of Soullington. You stated that I should have done this prior. Again, I, I feel the same way, that this developer is spending money moving forward. And again, it, it just, I, I guess it's a slippery slope, and I'm just scared what this does and what precedent this sets in the town of Soullington.
Lou will comment. This, the, this particular tax relief wasn't just discussed a few months ago. This has been, this has been on the table for a while. This has been part of the thought pattern this whole time. I understand where you're coming from.
But the zone was just changed.
I understand.
Just literally in the past couple of months.
Actually, I'd like to comment on that. The zone wasn't changed recently. The zone was an MUT. The current planning and zoning changed the parameters
Correct.
of the MUT. That's different than a zone change.
This application?
It was the Planning and Zoning Commission's, the Current Planning and Zoning's Commission prerogative. Now, what happened is, if you look at the component of the commission, there is a segment that wants to increase housing. So if you looked at the MUT, there wasn't an affordable housing component in it. This commission did give greater density, but they also added a 10% affordable component. They, they, in my opinion, the Planning and Zoning Commission's to be, you know, praised for that because what they tried to do is say, hey, look, we don't want you to hurt our affordable housing percentages. So at least by doing the 10%, you're inclusive. So, you know, and I respect this commission's authority over it. I also respect the Planning and Zoning Commission's ability to want to change just as if you want to change. If you decide not to do a tax abatement, that's your prerogative. I'm not saying, you know, three town councils before, you never changed it, why are you changing it? That's your, you're entitled to, you vote. I, I don't, I make the recommendations.
Do you know of any other residential enterprise zone, significant residential enterprise zone tax abatements that we've done besides the Greenway one?
We do it all the time.
On the residential?
On the residential. Every single transfer of the Jensen Community, or now the Sunrise Community, they get an exemption from state conveyance tax on the sales.
But that's, that's, I'm talking about a large project, a large development program like this one.
I could check various other towns.
I can't think of any in the last...
I know East Hartford was trying to reduce...
I'm talking about Soullington.
In Soullington. I don't know of any projects in the enterprise zone. We don't get involved in them.
Yeah. It's unusual to see this type of residential activity in an enterprise zone.
Exactly, that's why it's like $91 million.
That's why I'm saying, you know, the, I, I think that when we changed this to significantly more residential in the last few months, at the time, that should have been considered, it should have been considered out of the enterprise zone.
I think there's a balance, too. So what happens is, and I don't want to speak for the Planning and Zoning Commission, but from what I saw, it was an increase of about 25 units, but a decrease substantially, I think from 50% to 20% of commercial activity for a few reasons. And one of them was the state of the commercial market currently. The second one is, I think the commission was responding to the town. The town didn't want increased traffic on West Street. Commercial is what drives the traffic. So I think they deliberated prudently in reducing the commercial for an offset of 25 increases in, in units, and the 25 were affordable. So, you know, if 10% is substantial, you know, I would think that the decrease of 30% commercial extremely offsets any of the traffic pattern of 10. But I, I respect where you're coming from.
Okay, I think we discussed this a long time.
We have the next one?
Let's move on.
We have two more, so hopefully these will be quicker.
Madam Chair, I'm going to accuse myself for the next one. It's because I have financial interest in it. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, the next one is HQ Properties on Triano Drive, HQ Dumpsters and Recycling. They are building a 2,700 square foot office space, adding to its existing operations on Triano. They're going to add 35,000 in office equipment, which is not abated, and there's going to be five employees. So they're going for a tax abatement on that one. Any questions for that one? And then moving on to the next one at 340 Captain Lewis. Joe Gentile, Joseph Gentile and Son Landscaping is proposing two buildings on 340 Captain Lewis, both of which are 6,250 square feet. The first one will house their business. The second one is for investment. I believe it's going to be phased in. They're a local landscape company, and they're going for a seven-year tax abatement as well. And I'm here for any questions.
Thank you.
I just, a formal question for maybe the town attorney, but the names listed here, I'm assuming that the ownership might not reflect exactly. So I assume administratively, you folks take, take care of that?
We do.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, anybody? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Lou.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Hey, county attorneys report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be very brief with my comments. As this council is aware, and much of the public is aware, the town reorganized its legal structure with Attorney Rick Adone taking on the, you're accepting the position of corporate counsel, and me being appointed by this council as legal town attorney. I've been working with Attorney Rick Adone for the last couple of weeks with regard to trying not only to identify our respective duties, but more importantly, convey them to the public. My primary objective, as I think everyone in this diocese knows, is to serve as legal counsel to the town council. While the duties will expand beyond that, for, in large part, that's the principal duty that I have. There's been some confusion with the public in that regard, as far as what role I have, and more importantly, questions as it relates to various neighbor issues and so on and so forth. I've been working with Attorney Rick Adone on that. We devised a very informal plan as to how we can convey the, did sort of the delegation of duties. The next step is to review that with the town manager to make sure he's not only on board, but in support of it. And I think next month, I can provide a little more detailed summary of how broad my level of representation at that will be.
Appreciate that, and I think the public would also appreciate that.
Of course.
Thank you. Is that it?
That's it, thank you.
Any questions for our town attorney? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Let's move on, public communications. The microphone is open. If anyone in the public has any question or comment, we're here to listen.
Let's prepare for the snow, Madam Chair.
Yes, well, the snow is falling. I don't hear anybody at all. Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to close public communication. Let's go down to old business, action on the Board of Finance, please.
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, any discussion, any additions or deletions? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Del Santo?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmieri?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Chaplinsky?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes. Item B, action on the recommendation of Millennium Builders, Inc. for the municipal center boiler room renovation.
I'll make a motion to award Millennium Builders the job for the cost of $46,315.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mike, any discussion? Could you please call the roll?
Del Santo?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmieri?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Chaplinsky?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes. Item C, action on the recommendation of Millennium Builders for the fire department company five roof replacement.
Do you need three separate motions?
No, you could, you could make a motion as presented for all.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a...
So let me just make, item, fire company number five roof replacement, fire company number two renovation, and fire company number three renovation.
I'll make a motion to award all three to Millennium based upon the recommendation from town staff.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, let's call the roll. We'll, we'll call this.
Del Santo?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmieri?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Chaplinsky?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes. Item D, action on the request to extend the wastewater discharge... Hang on just a minute, everybody, we're getting started. Okay, we're on action item number D, to extend the wastewater discharge approval for 201 West Queen Street draft, approval subject to the non-material minor revisions.
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second. Let's call the roll.
Santo?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli? Palmieri?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Chaplinsky? Triano?
Yes. My understanding is that sound went out.
No.
It's okay now?
Stat giving you the vote.
Go through.
Go through?
Yeah, go.
Okay, we're going to move on. Item E, action on the tax abatement for Anthony Properties on West Street. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve. I know this was a big discussion item just a few minutes ago, but I think this is an opportunity for Soullington to forge ahead and possibly bring some tax dollars in over the next few years.
May I have, have a second?
Madam Chair, I'll second.
Okay, very good.
I'd like to comment also that that's been a difficult piece of progress for quite a while. Sounds like a viable, a viable option.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair, one more comment. I know I said it earlier, but us approving the tax abatement, I think, this project is going to go forward either way. And whether this is the highest and best use, we can argue that. But it certainly seems like it's been vetted to some degree. And us abating the real estate taxes for 100% for the first two years and scaled back is not going to turn the, the operation upside down if it's denied. So I understand there might be opposition to the project, and I respect that opinion. But I think we would be fooling ourselves if we said denying the tax abatement, which we kind of already agreed to in principle for many other businesses, would be, would be not really accurate. So I, I will be supporting the tax abatement on this project.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Del Santo?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmieri?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Chaplinsky?
No.
Triano?
No. Item F, action on the tax abatement for HQ, 64 Triano Drive. And I might add, I have nothing to do with Triano Drive.
Madam Chair, a motion to approve?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? And for the record, Mr. Perry has left the diocese for this vote. Hang on one second, Jack. Would you call the roll, please?
Who's the second, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure, what's going on? Okay.
I made the motion.
Yep.
And I'm not sure...
I second it.
Okay, thank you.
And there was no discussion, I don't believe.
No discussion as of yet. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's take the vote.
Del Santo?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmieri?
Item G, action on tax abatement for Joseph Gentile's property on 340 Captain Lewis Drive.
Madam Chair, motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Let's move on and call the roll, please.
Del Santo?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmieri?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Chaplinsky?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Moving along to new business, tax refunds. Jack?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the tax refunds that are presented in our packet.
Since Bill's not here, I'll second.
Very good. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Del Santo?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Palmieri?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Chaplinsky?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes. Okay. Now, we have our appointments for this meeting. The first one is the Building Board of Appeals, which includes five members, two Democrat, three Republican, for a five-year term expiring November 2027. I would mention that four of the five members are to be people with construction background, and the fifth one, which is a Republican appointment, would be civilian. So, yes, go ahead. Mike, would you make the first?
That's someone from the military?
Civilian.
Right. Madam Chair, I'd like to put the name for one of the tradespeople, for Mr. Paul Champagne from 62 Russell Road here in Milldale. Paul's got a longer career in the building industry, worked many, many years for Otis Elevator. He was on the building committee for the Calendar House and on the building, currently on the building committee for the library. Paul's well-versed. He's sure will do a great job.
Second.
Okay. Very good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This, second one for the Republican side?
Madam Chair, I'll put forth the name of Jeffrey White of Honey Lane in Southington. Mr. White has been a home builder and remodeler for over 40 years approximately, has dealt extensively with the town in numerous capacities, and I feel he would be a great fit for this board.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. I'd like to go to the, across the aisle, to the Democratic side.
Yes, I'd like to submit the name of Kurt Hollis of One Sawmill Lane. I'll second. He's got over 30 years in the construction field and has a master's degree in landscape architecture from the University of Michigan, has been involved in many commercial buildings as well as residential.
Very good. And it's been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
I'm going to abstain from that, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. And your second nominee?
Madam Chair?
Oh, go ahead.